Okay, this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting on June 22 at 6:30 PM. Agenda number one, in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 Corona's outbreak emergency, the June 22 20 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid any group communication. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakcam.tv/. Okay. As a preliminary matter, this is Richard LaCamera, the Chairman of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm all members and staff and persons anticipated on the agenda that are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. State each member's name. We have Maureen Cadito, the Town Administrator. I'm gonna skip Rhino for a second. We have Tracy Craig, Administrative Assistant to the Selectmen. We have Brian Day, a member of the Board of Selectmen. We have Mark Knox, Chairman of the Planning Board. We have Peter Conroy, Planning Board. We have Barbara, I'm sorry, I don't have all your names there, Barbara. Oh, unmute yourself.
Nikovsky.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and we have Mike Olson, who is the Managing Partner of Rhino. We have Tyler Murphy, who is in charge of Development, Construction and Development for Rhino. And we have John O'Leary, who is...
Also a member of Rhino Capital.
Okay. And we have Colin.
Also a member of Rhino Capital.
Okay. Okay, alright. This is an open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and is conducted remotely and consistent with the Governor's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings as such. The Governor's order suspends the requirement for the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which could be found posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so as long as a reasonable public access is afforded to the public and can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment, but will provide a chat from Facebook. For this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is convening by video conferencing via Zoom as posted on the town's website. Okay, please note this meeting is being recorded, that all attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that the folks may be able to see you and take care not to share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be cashed by this recording. All supporting documentation has been provided for the members of this party or available on town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless they know otherwise. Meeting ground rules. We are turning to the first item on the agenda. So we are all set here now. For the Rhino people, they're gonna do the presentation at 7 o'clock. You know, you're posted on the agenda just so they know, so we'll do some other things in the meantime while we get through that. Okay, third thing on the agenda is the Selectmen's announcements. The town will be holding an annual and special town meeting on June 23 at Aponequid High School. This year, the annual town meeting will come first, beginning at 7 o'clock, followed by the special town meeting at 8 o'clock. The library has announced that curbside pickup is now available at the library, but you should be aware it only involves our collection of books. We can't get any other books from any other libraries like we always have in the past. The transfer station is fully operational now, thank goodness. Has anybody else got any other announcements? Maureen?
I'm all set. Just the completion will be happening at the end of this week for the both of the soccer field and the karate, not the field, the parking and the karate studio parking in Ted Williams Park. That should be complete, so even though you can't drive on it yet, we're addressing all the potholes and issues that we've known have been a problem and that we've finally got to fix, and we're excited. It looks great. If you buy, it's really an improvement, and I'm very happy to see that it's gone on. And my other announcement is the Highland Road project had a slight delay, and that should be completed by the end of this week also. And so they'll be putting a micro coat on it this week. And for details, please log into www.lakvilleMA.org, and it'll tell all the details of the project.
Okay, next item on the agenda is reviewing both the memos of understanding with the police fire and the laborers union for fiscal 21. We didn't think we were gonna be able to get the contracts done, but we have. And so the three unions have agreed to the contracts, so what we need to do now is that we review these memos of agreement and have approved them in executive session previously, and now we have to approve them in open session. So I will entertain a motion that we approve the memo of understanding for the New England Police Association.
So moved.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
None for me.
Okay.
What's her?
All those in favor? LaCamera, aye.
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
I'm sorry, I thought Brian had a question.
Oh, did you have a question, Brian? I'm sorry.
No, no, I just said no, sir, no discussion for me.
Okay. Okay, the next one is the memo of agreement between the Lakeville Permanent Firefighters, Local 3188. I'll entertain a motion to approve the memo of agreement.
So moved.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
LaCamera, aye. Okay, the next one is for the laborers union. I'll entertain a motion to approve the laborers' union memo of understanding.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the laborers' union with the amendments.
I will second the motion with the amendments.
Any discussion?
None for me.
No, sir.
Okay. All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
LaCamera, aye. Okay, next on the agenda is the vote to rescind previous special municipal employee designations and vote to designate special municipal designations for fiscal 21. Okay. So the first thing that we have to do is vote to rescind the previous year's special municipal employee designations for fiscal 20. I'll entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second that motion.
Any discussion?
Nope.
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
LaCamera, aye. Okay, so briefly, what a designated employee designation is, is that if you're employed by the town, or you are a town official, and you get paid, what this does is it gives you the option of actually doing some work, you know, for the town. So as an example, somebody like who works in the Highway Department as the Administrative Assistant is gonna take minutes for some other boards, so we have to designate her as a designated employee. So some other things would be if you're on the Conservation Commission as an example, and you do work for the town, you know, repair work or something, you have to be designated. So what we have is the current list of special municipal employee designation includes the Energy Advisory Committee, the Highway Departmental Administrative Assistant, Zoning Board of Appeals member, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Special Police Officers. So I will entertain a motion to approve these special municipal employee designations.
Okay, and this isn't the person, correct, Rich? It's the actual position, is that?
Yes, we don't have to put the people's name in.
Alright, so I'll make a motion that we appoint the following designations: Energy Advisory Committee, Highway Department Administrative Assistant, Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, Special Police Officers.
Do you want to second that, Brian?
Only question, does the motion need to specify FY21 or not?
I think it does. Tracy?
It would be fine.
Okay, so for FY21.
Alright, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Day, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay. Alright. Okay, the next thing for fiscal 21 budget is to view and vote to approve the non-union wage scales. So in your packet, you have the wage scales for, actually, it's just about all the alley employees here. So I will entertain a motion to approve the classification and compensation plan for non-exempt, non-benefit employees and benefit-eligible exempt and non-exempt union.
Non-union.
Right.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
None for me.
What's her?
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye. Okay. Let me back here now. Okay, under new business, unfortunately, we had a passing of one of our planning board members. And so what we need to do is appoint a new member. And the process to doing that is that we have to notify the public of anybody that may be interested in applying or being appointed, you know, to the planning board. So we will take any names, you know, over the next couple of weeks, and we will appoint jointly with the planning board that person on, hopefully, July 6, if that works for the planning board. We have to check with the planning board to make sure that that works, you know, for them. So I will entertain a motion that we post this position, the availability of an open planning board position.
I'll make that motion, Rich.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion?
Where, Tracy, where do we usually post that? Do we put it in newspaper?
It goes in the Gazette, and it goes on the town's website. And I can put it out on Facebook as well.
Okay.
Okay, I know we happen to have the planning board with us this evening as well. And anybody have any questions, Mr. Chairman, about this posting?
At this point, I don't think so. I know you've mentioned a date for the possible joint appointment. Do you know what that was again?
We were talking about July 6. If that doesn't work, and I know that's a tough vacation week for a lot of people. If it works, that'd be great. If it doesn't, we'll do another date.
Mr. Chair, that's too quick because we won't get it in the paper on the 25th, so it won't even appear in the Gazette until July 2.
Well, we don't have to actually put it in the paper in the advertising. We can contact the paper and have them write an article that basically says we have an open position on the planning board, but we don't have to put an ad in there.
No, but that's what I'm talking about. The paper gets published on Friday or Monday, so it's already too late to get it in for the 25th.
Oh, I see.
I can call and try, but the deadline's usually the Thursday before. But I can give her a call and see if we can get it in.
Okay, I don't think we, Mark, I don't think we should wait. We should, you know, post it internally on our website and so forth, that there is availability, and if people apply, that's great, but I think we ought to shoot for July 6 if that's okay with you guys.
Alright.
It would be fine, and if you needed to move the date back, a meeting would also be amenable to that. We want the best possible person to take the position.
Okay, so we do want to get it in the paper then.
I think that would be wise.
Okay, alright, so I'll back that off. So Tracy will probably do it at the following meeting then, which is July...
One week at a time, 13th.
I don't think we're meeting the 13th.
Not meeting the 13th right now.
What?
But does the planning board have a meeting coming up?
We could join them.
We could join you guys.
I believe our dates would be July 9 and July 23.
Okay, well, we could, is the 9th okay, Tracy?
Well, if I get it in the paper this week, that'd be good. If I get it in the paper the next week, it would be the 2nd, so we could have letters due back to us by July 8.
Alright, do you want to see what happens, Mark, first, before we make that decision?
Yeah, I would like to see that date floating for the actual meeting and get response.
Well, I do need to put a date that letters of interest are due by. If it's 6, we have to have them back by July 2.
Well, I think if you did the July 8 date, that would still give us the option of our July 9 meeting.
Right, okay, so July 8.
Yep. Can I ask, is the planning board here as a meeting or just informational?
Informational.
Okay, so you don't need to open a meeting or anything, right?
No, we were just here to observe the Rhino Capital presentation, that's it.
Okay, just checking.
Post your meeting?
The meeting for tonight, because we were attending and there wasn't enough time for Kathy to post it, I guess, from the time that we reorganized.
So it's just informational, though?
It's not a problem, they're just here to...
They're not deliberating.
They're not gonna discuss and make any decisions here at all.
They're just here to... okay.
Okay, as far as a couple of things in old business, I think that we had asked the Open Space Committee to give us an answer back on 73 Howland Road property, and I think that we should have an update by the next meeting, July 6, as to what we're going to be doing, because this has been hanging out here for a few months now, and it's not fair, not only to the owner, but not fair to the developer, you know, as well. So can you follow up on that, Maureen, please?
Yeah, I'll reach out to Jesse. Maureen had asked me to do that the other day.
Okay. Okay, I think that's about it, you know. There is other items to be added to the next agenda, but I can wait, you know, on that.
We, I don't know if you saw the question, Rich, from Michelle Dyer, asking if the public meeting is on the 23rd tomorrow. I'm, I think she probably means the town meeting, so maybe she missed the beginning of the announcements, but if she...
Okay.
Town meeting, then yes, tomorrow night is the town meeting at Aponequid High School on, at 7 o'clock.
Correct, thank you for seeing that.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else out there? Jose's just yelling at me to make sure I stay in the picture.
Sorry about that.
Okay, Jose, you keep us honest.
He does it to everybody, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, so, okay, where are we? Got about five minutes. Is there anything else the board wants to bring up as far as new business is concerned and old business?
All I would like to say is the lights look very nice in the office. I finally saw them for the first time the other day.
Well, it's taken a while, but they look good.
They look good. It's nice to have light. Thank God it was summer up till now, because if it had been winter, it would have been very dark.
Dreary.
Well, I didn't have lights this winter. It was very dark.
Okay, I will bring up something else, then, we're just waiting. One of the things I think that we need to improve upon as a board is that the, it's very difficult, you know, to put the agenda together, and a lot of times, it's been extremely difficult all the last three months. So I would like to review that process of how we put the agenda together and try to get a preliminary agenda earlier instead of Thursday, because then we're running around trying to, you know, get the agendas fixed. So the idea of putting a preliminary agenda available maybe on Tuesday, and then giving the board the opportunity to submit their agenda items, you know, for the meeting. So on July 6, I'd like to discuss that process and how we can improve it and make it better, because what happens to poor Tracy is that she's running around, you know, with our demands, you know, trying to get the agenda together, and a lot of it's been last minute lately. We can't, we have to do that. I mean, it's just been the way it is, but anyway, so that's one of the things I wanted to talk about on July 6 meeting as well. Okay, Maureen, do you have anything you want to bring up? You all said?
No, I'm good today.
Okay. We just got a couple of minutes here.
I know, Rich, going back to what you just said, there is, in the Selectmen's policies, there is something that says any item brought forward for consideration to be included in the meeting agenda must be provided to the town administrator in writing no later than 12 o'clock noon on the third business day before a scheduled meeting. So that's actually...
Wednesday.
Yeah, so for a Monday meeting, that would typically be Wednesday, which means if any other department, board, commission, head, they would have to have it to us by Wednesday. So we should probably, you know, if we, we should really look at that, I agree. During COVID-19, we've had some, you know, just trying to keep business going, but on a regular basis, we don't need to be rushing some of these items. So there were a few things before COVID-19 that sort of just came up, and then we realized we didn't have enough information, so I would like to just kind of put a policy in place and stick to it, so we can look at a couple of these policies that are already out there that would be helpful to... according to this one here, it would be the Wednesday before, so it would be nice to see a preliminary agenda by Tuesday, but, so, that's that.
Okay, we have a comment from Martha Smith saying that, "While with only 12 viewers, I'm surprised you want to rush this through without notifying the citizens of the town open position. Maybe we should have a better method of communication to the town since many don't pay for the Middleborough Gazette." And so Martha, just so you know, we do put it on the town's website, and we put it on the town's, you know, Facebook page. Unfortunately, because of the media, both the Middleborough Gazette, the Brockton Enterprise, and the Standard Times, we used to have full-time reporters that used to cover the town. We don't have anybody that covers the town anymore, including the Middleborough Gazette, except for a special writer that may write an article. So it's very difficult, you know, to get the messages out, and we do the best we can. So I just wanted to comment on that.
Rich, may I add something, Mr. Chair? So we also have the ability for people to subscribe to our website, and then any information that we put out there, it pushes it out to your email. So if we have an announcement, it goes directly to your email, and you don't have to search around for it. And additionally, we do have a Facebook page that if you like our Facebook page, any announcements that we do, we try to get out there if there's something for the public to act on or be part of, so we try to share it there, too. So we're using alternate methods to try to get stuff out to people.
Okay, that's a good point, thank you.
So pretty much any of those things like that, that would generate an email to whoever has subscribed to the town's, and you can pick and choose what you want. So if you want Selectmen's information, then you can, you know, if you want clerks' information, which would be elections and, you know, that kind of stuff, it automatically will, when there's a change, push an email out to you. So that's a really good way to stay informed, especially of the things that you're more concerned with.
Okay, it's 7 o'clock, so we can now go on to our presentation. I guess the first thing, you know, I'd like to say that most of us know, if not all of us know, that the Lakeville Hospital, you know, closed in 1992, and it was devastating to the community. Not only did they close it, they just left it the way it was, and they didn't prepare the building, you know, to be closed, and there's all kinds of water problems with the building and so forth and so on. Stop &amp; Shop wound up purchasing it, and then Stop &amp; Shop, you know, was gonna put a grocery store there and a Target at the time and other retail, and they pulled out, you know, as well, and sold it, let's see, about three years ago, to Derek Maxey, who bought it from Stop &amp; Shop. So this has been a long time coming, and as far as the development of that piece of property, we did have a Cisco proposal there, which was a very large, you know, distribution, you know, facility there, and that got voted down by town meeting. So here we are again, and I'd like to introduce Mike Olson, who is the Managing Principal of Rhino Capital. And Mike, if you want to say a few words, and then maybe you can introduce the people that are with you. And then I guess Tyler can take over the presentation.
Rich, thank you for that, and thank you to you and your team. You guys have been spectacular to work with today. As you mentioned, we currently have this site under agreement from the current owner. We've been able to conduct some diligence over the last several months, and we currently are embarking on this permitting effort. As Rich mentioned, I'm joined by several members of our team, most notably Tyler Murphy, who runs construction and development. He'll be running this meeting in a few moments, so I'm going to turn it over to him quickly. But before that, I also want to let you know that John O'Leary, his associate, has also joined us, as well as Colin Reich. So with that, I'll hand it off to Tyler. He's going to run through what we put together today on this very exciting opportunity that we're looking forward to share with all of you.
Hi, everyone. This is Tyler Murphy here. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So I wanted to kick off this meeting with talking a little bit about where we started, how this project and idea came to be, and talk about some of the steps and phases that we've gone through in order to get to this point, and hopefully be able to answer questions along the way or after the fact. Starting high level, what Rhino Capital does is we're a developer who mostly pursues flex and industrial space, and we really do our best job to find space, locations, buildings, and do construction that meets our tenants' needs. We feel that we've done our best job here to come up with something that really meets the market and where the market trends are moving. And that's why we've come up with the picture that's in front of you. And we'll get into some of the more details about height, size, location, and that thing as you move through this. The way that this started was originally working with Derek to determine the parcels that were available that we could put together in a form that would allow something, some scale and some size that would allow us to really take care of some of the environmental issues that are present on the site currently. Once we assembled a group of parcels, we were able to move on and start to sketch, what would this building actually look like? What would the size of it be? What would the scale of it be? Taking into account things like elevations, wetlands, the existing environmental conditions and landfill, those sorts of things. We then go on and we review those with a team of commercial brokers, past projects that we've built, to get some feedback and make sure that it's something that tenants in the marketplace would actually desire and be looking for. From that point forward, we start to get into the details of the site, making sure we have updated wetlands flagging, which we went and completed this spring, as well as developing an associated permitting matrix to start to understand what local and state codes that we'll be looking to permit with and different groups and organizations that we'll be working with throughout this process, again, both locally and state level. From that point, we turned to what we knew was going to be a daunting set of environmental issues, and we completed a Phase 1 environmental assessment to help identify what those were. That was inclusive of using some of the existing wells that are on the site, as well as doing a review of the buildings, because their condition has continued to deteriorate over the years. From that point forward, we completed a zoning code review, had some preliminary discussions with different members of the town, including Nate and Rich. And from that point on, we were able to develop, based on all that information, these renderings that you see in front of you here today, and there's a few more that we can go through in just a second. From that point, we take these renderings, these plans, and the environmental impacts, and start to understand what is the total cost associated with cleaning up this site and also to construct it. From that point, we moved on to today, which is what we're considering, this preliminary meeting to understand some different parts of what everyone's looking for and to answer some questions. And then our next step here is going to be continue doing various testing on the site, which is mainly marked by geotechnical reports, further soil and well testing, as well as a Phase 2 environmental assessment, which will essentially take what we already discovered as issues and really do a better job defining the extent to which they need to be remediated to. We're also in the process of completing our ALTA survey, which we already had overhead flights done for, to map because of the size of the site and completing our property acquisition. So with that, that's a good overview of sort of where we came from and how we got to where we are today. Happy to answer any questions or go through any details that anyone would like to.
That was Tyler that gave the initial presentation?
Yes, that's me.
All right. Thank you, Ty. I appreciate it. This is Brian Day from the Board of Selectmen. I think it goes without saying that some of this environmental investigation you've been doing is critical in the project. Would you be able to perhaps help myself and our residents that might be watching this later? Like, you know, what, what are the things that come later? So should we look at this presentation as an initial presentation that helps us understand scope and, and purpose? And are there other things that come a little bit later, such as like what the actual site designs, architectural elements might look like? Just so that we can kind of understand expectations as you guys potentially move along when we might see certain things?
Absolutely. I think you have to nail that head that today is really about preliminary discussion. And with that, I will flip through a couple more slides to provide some context as to what the building will look like, as well as where it's located on the site. But there will definitely be more meetings and further development of this plan that will give a lot of specificity to architectural details, landscape plans, and those sorts of things. And I, and today I can answer some of those preliminary items about how maybe we're going to approach those, but maybe not exactly what they'll be. So.
Second, this is Michael Olson again. It's worth noting that we've created a website, which will be continually updating as we continue our investigation, right, continue to make progress. And that is called rhonelakevilledevelopment.com. If there's a way to distribute that to folks that may watch this later, we certainly will want to do that. But we've put the majority of the information that we're going to review today with you up on that website. And as we continue to learn more, and the team that we've assembled of engineers and advisors throughout this process, most notably a very reputable firm called VHB, which has been helping us through identifying this scope for environmental services. Again, we're going to put all that information up on the website to continue the flow of information and continue to be transparent. But with that, to Tyler's point, Brian, I think he's going to be able to answer a good chunk of information about what we've done to date, how this building fits on the site, et cetera, et cetera. But we'd be remiss if we didn't share with you, there's a lot more diligence that we need to do, and therefore, this plan will continue to be refined over the next several weeks and months as we continue our permitting efforts.
That's great. Thank you. It kind of helps set what questions we should or should not perhaps expect answers to at this point. So we appreciate that.
Absolutely. And Brian, I'll just continue to go through and flip through just a couple more pictures here to provide some context about the building and the site, and then I'll touch on the environmental question that you had.
It's probably worth noting, Tyler, I noticed some questions coming through on the chat. We'll save those until the end. We'll get through the presentation first, and then we'll tackle some of those questions that's coming through, through the chat, if that's all right with the selectmen.
Sure.
So this drawing in particular does give you a better perspective of where the building would sit on the site. Here you have Main Street 105. Then you've got Rhode Island Road, existing extent to the wetlands, 50 and 100-foot buffer zones. And right now, we have, I know there's been a lot of questions about the view from Main Street. We're set about 400 feet back from Main Street right now. So for concept, what is 400 feet? It's larger than a football field with the end zones. So we're set a good distance back from Main Street. It's slightly further back than where the buildings are today. But what we're presenting is a 402,500-square-foot building. It's 350 feet wide by 1,150 feet long. And we're trying to keep the office at the front of the building, which is what you see back in this picture here. This is a very basic rendering, and I would not have the expectation or put the expectation for the building will look exactly like this. We're certainly looking at different landscape options and different options here to improve the look. We've hired Greg Lombardi Architects, who is an excellent architecture firm, has a lot of experience with large institutional buildings. They do a phenomenal job of really figuring out the best way and best look of a site. You had asked some questions about environmental, and I don't want to dive into a ton of detail about that, but I will touch on some of the items that I'm sure most people are aware of. It's really three categories here. Category 1 is the existing landfill and the containment removal of that. The next one is the continuing destruction or degradation of the buildings. They continue to fall apart and present a number of hazards because of that. And the third one is there is a number of tanks and different storage tanks that were above and below grade, some of which were removed properly when the hospital closed, and some of which were not removed properly that we need to work on remediation and further test on. There's a number of wells that have been installed around the site. We're adding more to continue to test for soil and, and different types of contaminants of that. So those are really the big three items, though diving into each one individually. But there's certainly, it's quite an extensive report, to say the least, given the number of buildings and size of the lot. And Brian, I hope that answered your question, if there's, if there's anything more.
No, it did. I think that's really important. And thank you for laying those out so that, you know, ourselves, the residents, everybody that's interested in this project and what's going on understands the scope and magnitude of what you guys are looking into and what you might be taking care of. That's, it's excellent information.
Yes.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Tyler, you want to present now, or?
That's all I had to present. I was just here to really just give an overview of how we got to here, show some general picture of the building, and then answer any questions that anyone may have had. I think that our background conversations regarding some of the local permitting process and things like that have really helped us structure our plans moving forward. But we still do have, you know, quite a bit of work ahead of us in order to finalize this plan or get it to another point of discussion, maybe I should say. And we'll continue to work on that and work with the members of Town of Lakeville to continue to progress this project forward.
Any of the planning board members have any questions?
Chairman, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So one of the questions I have for you is, are there other locations where you have done projects of this size that we could have a look at, the quality of work that was done?
Yeah, I think the best view or best representation of that would be a building at 130 Dever Drive in Ton, Massachusetts. That's a building that NN Inc. has leased from us, and they do mostly aerospace manufacturing at this facility, high-precision manufacturing. But that building does have, while it's not as robust as what this building would be, it does have a lot of the features that you're seeing here, such as varying colors, different panel types, different materials, canopy on the front, loading docks, and provides some of the mass that you see here. It would be a general good representation of a project that we've done. We can certainly get you, we have one picture on our website, but we can certainly get you more pictures of that facility that will really help, I think, identify the quality of work and look of the building.
What year was that done?
That was just, it was built in 2019, and we just wrapped it up this year. So we would have signed off in March.
Okay. How many developments of this size has your firm done?
This will be the first development of this scale, but we, most of what we do is large-scale, a commercial project. So anything, you know, 20,000 to 50,000, there's a pocket of that, and then there's 50,000 square feet and above.
Do you intend for this property to be occupied by one or multiple tenants?
We are planning for this to be a single tenant facility.
Okay. Um, do you have any idea what the current absorption rate is for properties of this type in Massachusetts? And I would even include some of the surrounding areas of this size?
I can jump in and answer that. This is Michael Olson. It's a great question. So to, to start off, obviously, we are trying to cast a wide net of potential tenants. That being said, we are trying to ride the wave of e-commerce and logistics, which is really taking over, and it is sprung by groups like Amazon. We're not necessarily saying that Amazon is ultimately going to be this tenant in the building, but very likely that it's going to be a group like that. That being said, it could be a manufacturing tenant. It could be any number of tenants, and we're in such the infant stages right now. Again, we're trying to cast a very wide net of what a potential tenant might be. In terms of absorption rates, vacancy rate overall for industrial space is very, very low right now in Massachusetts. We've got very close relationships with all the big leasing brokerage firms, such as JLL, Newmark, who will be representing this site, CBRE, just to name a few. And they are actively working with several tenants of this size range and looking for space that, quite frankly, does not exist right now. So folks.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, folks are looking for opportunities like this to build new buildings, to create supply to meet the existing man that's out there.
Can you tell me again what the square footage of the building was?
402,500, based on our very initial site plans.
Okay. I, this may, I, I'm just going to go ahead and jump out there, just step my foot right into the swamp here. But when this property was initially purchased, it was our understanding that the property couldn't be transferred until the environmental work was done. So this property has changed hands a few times, and the environmental piece is a big part of, at least in my mind, the priority for this site. Who is the, I'm looking through my notes. Can you tell me again who your environmental was doing, was, uh, the Phase 1 environmental was done by VHB?
Correct.
But the Phase 2 has not been completed yet?
Not been completed yet, but is in process.
Okay. And you've gotten bids for demolition by one or multiple vendors?
Multiple vendors today, but it's challenging to get the full scope of demo, which we would include, obviously, environmental remediation, because we are still investigating the full scope of the environmental situation that exists right now.
Okay, fair enough. I think that's my questions for now.
Okay, Barbara, thank you. There was a couple of questions here, and then we'll go back to the planning board. One other question is, if you're going to go forward with this project, about when, where would you be demoing the buildings?
Rich, that's a good question, and we really have very basic estimates. We've put together a very loose schedule at this point, not knowing how things are going to play out from here on out. But I would anticipate right now, probably Q2 of 2021, somewhere in that range, we'd hope to be in a position where we can begin cleaning up the site and demolishing the buildings.
Okay, thank you. The.
Sorry, Chair. I was just going to ask to clarify calendar year 2021, right? We always tend to flip between fiscal and calendar.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have, we have another question from Mike Wiggs. Does the Route 79 improvement have anything to do with this project? The answer is no. The Route 79 project was started back in 2016, and there will be no access on Route 79 from this property. Okay. The planning board have any other questions before we go on to a couple more? Mark, anybody?
I guess the only comment that I'd like to make is it's, it's really difficult to get a full sense because there isn't a tenant right now. It's all, everything's on speculation. If this was to come in front of the planning board, would we want to ask questions about traffic impacts? And, you know, the things that would affect the town around. But I think everything that they're going to be able to tell us tonight is speculation. I mean, I'd still take that for information. But I also think we all have to understand that it may not be what they tell us it's going to change, depending on the tenant. Is that accurate, gentlemen?
That's accurate. So we're still trying to, of course, put parameters around that. We're doing a good job of working with our commercial brokerage group to look at similar buildings of this scale, these types of tenants, to start to put parameters around what we're going to be facing in terms of traffic, truck counts, and those sorts of things. But I think you said it perfectly, that ultimately, it is all on speculation to. But I think you said it perfectly, that ultimately it is all on speculation to a degree. We have started the traffic studies. We're facing obviously the issue of the fact that it's summer and there's also COVID-19 happening. But we are working with the town on some existing traffic stays that have occurred and starting to put those things together. So we are in the process of figuring out the best way to move forward, given the fact that this is on spec at this point.
Would you mind just scrolling the screen share, the one, it's, I'm not going to call it a site plan, but it was the overview rendering site plan?
Yes, I believe Jose has control at this point, but let me see, I can still do it, yep.
Mark, do you ask, mind if I ask him one question while he's pulling that up? Go right ahead. I was just going to ask if it would be unreasonable for, while you're doing some of these, to overlay the current site with your tentative plans, just so that the residents can kind of see, here are the parcels, here's the current building footprint, current building footprint with what you're kind of designing. So they can kind of understand where that is compared to the current buildings.
Yeah, so this is actually an overlay. And so I understand that it's likely difficult to see here. So I'm not going to zoom in too far, but really where, can you see my mouse right now?
Yes, sir.
Where you're seeing that is really where you see the front of the existing buildings today. Over here would be the smokestack.
Okay.
And as you roll back, you can see the extent of the landfill here, just to give you some sort of proximity.
Gotcha. Yeah, perhaps one with a little more transparency so they can see both existing and proposed.
I can get that up, yep.
All right. Apologize for the interruption, Mark.
No, no problem. It's a valid question. It looks like there's, there would be no proposed access to Route 79. Everything would be on Route 105.
That's correct. That's correct.
So I guess I would refrain from too much comment until you had a harder plan and some, maybe some traffic studies on the potential tenants that you would bring in. And the only other comment that I guess I'd like you to speak to is the height of the front of the proposed building compared to the existing hospital building? And I'm assuming how much lower that's going to be?
Right now, we're projecting the building to be between 40 and 45 feet tall. The difference being designed essentially. So if we're going to be doing parapets or changing parapet heights and final roof design, that's essentially what that difference is made up of. But 40 to 45 feet is what we're projecting right now. The thing that's really going to, I think, change the look of the site in terms of height more than anything else, is really going to be the center part. So where I'm circulating my mouse here is really the high point of the site. It's roughly 15 feet above where you have Main Street now. So it's very gradual, but it is by the time you hear about 15 feet higher. Being able to bring this land down more in line with Main Street is going to help, you know, bring the look of the site and bring everything just a little bit lower than where it sits now.
But Mark, overarching theme, you're absolutely right. This existing building will be lower than the existing buildings that are currently on the site.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question? I apologize, on my note, on my notes, I didn't notate what you felt the vacancy rate was. Do you, do you have any comment on that? I mean, these very large buildings are a specialty, right? So I'm just wondering, do you know what the vacancy rate is for this building type in Massachusetts?
So if you were a tenant right now and your geographic area that you were looking at is what we would call south of the city, so call it 495 South, and that including areas like Fall River and New Bedford, there will be two existing buildings that you could look at as a potential place that you can go. In terms of overall vacancy rate for the industrial market, same area, it's less than 10% right now.
What about for the state? Do you know?
I don't know the state, but for Eastern Massachusetts, same thing. The overall industrial market, depending on how people define industrial market, whether it's warehouse or what types of buildings they include, same thing. It's less than 10% right now.
What is the lease term you anticipate having with a tenant like this? Will it be a 10-year term, 20-year term? You don't know yet because you don't have a tenant in place, but projection wise?
Projection wise, anything between seven and 20 years. For context, the building that Tyler referenced earlier in our presentation in Taunton is a 15-year lease. Recent leases that we've seen of this size would average between 10 and 12 years.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a number of questions out there. Does anybody else on the planning board want to ask any other questions? Peter, did you want to ask a question?
Yes, Rich, I was wondering if their company is planning on any kind of solar or, you know, going to work through the, making the entire building like LEED certified, whereas they're building it without a tenant yet. You know, is that, is that something that you're planning on?
Well, the first point I want to make is although we don't have a tenant yet, given the demand that's out there right now, before the demo starts, and Tyler mentioned, we anticipate Q2 of 2021 calendar year. We anticipate seeing a lot of tenants come through and expressing interest. To your question of solar, it's worth mentioning. We've recently completed two solar projects on other buildings in the state that we currently own, which have gone very well. It's really up to the tenant. So we would likely wait for the tenant to express interest first and then work with them on what their power needs would be and then build a potential solar farm to meet that. In terms of LEED certification, again, it would likely be more tenant driven than anything else. But certainly something that we're mindful of and open to, because a lot of tenants are getting quote unquote, "more green."
Thank you.
Anybody else on the planning, Mark, you had a follow-up maybe?
No.
Also, okay, let's try to answer some of these questions that have come up here. Michelle, is, is the geotechnical data, hazmat or any sewer or stormwater impacts available as well?
So that's a good question and that's exactly teeing up where we're at right now in the process. So we are currently engaging in geotechnical information, hazmat, which we'll call environmental phase two, and the stormwater for a preliminary site plan. Those are all the activities that are going on actively right now with VHB. And they're using also a number of different subcontractors to complete that work. So all those things are underway and we're actively trying to find ways to make the stormwater and retention ponds specifically more features on the site than just sort of tucking them away. So trying to get creative with those as well.
Okay, next question from Denise. Does this mean the funeral home is going away? No, the land that they're buying is the rest of the Lakeville Hospital property, which is about 50 acres. All the land along 79, which I believe is six house lots or seven house lots, have already been approved. And then three lots along Main Street, which includes the funeral home, and then two lots beside the funeral home. Those have been sold as well and don't affect this property at all. Okay, got a question from Noah again. You know, what is the website again, Tyler, please?
It's rhinolakvilledevelopment.com.
Okay, the next one is from Sharon. It says, how is this different than Cisco with the town? I'm moving too fast here. Town voted down. The Cisco building was twice the size of this building.
And Rich, I think one, one item that we had discussed before too is that the Cisco had a lot of cold storage and that brings a ton of different chemicals and those sorts of things onto the site, which this facility would not have as of right now.
Okay. From Dick, should it be closer to 105 versus houses? I guess the answer that, you know, answer that question is, once again, this is in the preliminary site, you know, plan. So, you know, modifications may or may not be done, but it's too early to determine that. Is that a fair statement, Tyler?
Absolutely. And there's also the landfill back there. So that's part of the, part of the design as well.
Okay. Carrie, having said that it won't be access from 79, will the big trucks be entering? And not down reservoir or Hot Court Avenue residential areas? The answer is they'll be entering onto Main Street and hopefully most of the traffic would go to 495. I think that brings up an interesting question, which I think is something the town should address, is to not allow these trucks on some of these residential neighborhood. So that's something that I think that, you know, should be considered when this site plan is reviewed with the board and the, in the planning board. So the goal would be not to have these trucks going down those side streets off 105. Denise, the truck traffic on Bridge Street is already excessive. Any plans to prevent it from getting any worse? That whole area, Denise, is coincidentally, you know, before this project even came forward, the town went and met with Mass DOT, you know, to talk about some of the concerns, you know, about Bridge Street and that whole area. So the answer would be that as the traffic studies are done and we look at access, you know, it definitely would be under consideration. I think I got everybody. Okay, I think that's all the questions right now. So everybody understands, you know, what the process is going to be. Is that the town in 2012 approved what they call 43D permitting process, okay? And actually, I think the permitting process is a good idea because what it does, it initially sets up a team of people that are members from the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, Conservation Commission. And we sit down as a group and we review what needs to be done, what the plans need to be done. And then each of these members bring it back to the individual board for whether it's septic, whether it's conservation or wetlands, whether it has to do with site plan review. So the goal of this permitting really is to keep everybody communicating together, you know, as a group, instead of the planning board doing their thing and conservation doing their thing and vice versa. So this is, I think, definitely a good approach. So where do we go from here? The first thing is that, you know, this, this planning process is not going to happen overnight. I mean, this is going to take a while for this to be done. So what we need to do as a town is form this team and this committee to start this process. And then probably in the fourth quarter and the first quarter of '21, then we can start the process, you know, of permitting and so forth. So, which is going to take a while. So once again, all these meetings, you know, are public meetings and will be posted, you know, on the website and the, in the Facebook page. And also we can send you emails, set you up for emails. So that's where we are. And so it's going to be a little while. Tyler, I'm not trying to put it worse in your mouth, but I would assume it's going to take a couple more months to get the finish of the environmental testing that needs to be done.
Exactly correct, because there's a lot of other testing and different studies that we're doing as well in addition. So it'll be a couple of months to complete those.
So I mean, that, that piece is very important because then we have to determine, you know, what needs to be done. Oh, we have to go to DEP, of course, you know, DEP would be involved as, as with the state, you know, as far as traffic is concerned and so forth. So that's kind of where we are.
And we're continuing a number of preliminary meetings with various state agencies in the meantime to continue to narrow down those things. So we're not just waiting until everything's done. We're stepping ahead and meeting with MIPA and other various state agencies to try to continue to narrow down exactly what needs to be done and what everyone's looking for.
Then also from the town's perspective, you know, we certainly would want to, we want to, we will have to do a peer review and we want to make sure that we can get somebody from Surford to help us through this project and project to coordinate this project. At the same time, we want to hire an engineering firm that has expertise in projects of this size, not only the projects of this size, but having to do with everything from the environmental issues all the way through site plan review and et cetera. So we have some work to do, as you do.
Yes.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one suggestion if I may.
Sure.
As we move forward, perhaps not yet, but perhaps in the future, we'll determine a good point of time where, similar to the Route 79 project dedicating, perhaps given the magnitude of the potential project, a point for residents, not just with Rhino Capital's website here, perhaps a point we can put kind of our own FAQ for questions that keep coming back from residents so that we can kind of point them to one place, get the right answer each time, to make it easier for folks to disseminate that information.
Well, I think we can look at that. That's a good idea, Brian. I think let's look at what they're putting together first and we can probably link into that for that as well and to make it easier. So it's all in one place. So we'll discuss that as we go along.
Agreed. Sounds good. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions? And I'm sure we're going to have a lot of questions as we move forward here.
Mr. Chairman, I had one comment. And I think I saw Nate Darling had logged into the meeting as well. But one of the public comments that you had from Facebook was somebody saying that we voted down Cisco at town meeting. And I just, I don't think that the permitting process for this project would involve town meeting. And I think that people should know that. So if they have comment, they should take advantage of any avenue during the early on parts of this process, because it really won't go to town meeting.
That is correct.
That's all.
Okay, there's no more questions out on chat. So I guess we're all set. We appreciate everybody participating and I know there'll be a lot more meetings, as we move forward over the next six months, so. Okay, I guess we're all set, Mike. Thank you. And Tyler?
Very grateful.
Rich, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody at Rhino. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, planning board members. We appreciate you attending.
Thanks for having us.
Okay.
Enjoy the evening. Stay safe. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Thanks, good night.
Thank you, Nate, for joining us and for all the work that you've already done here.
Okay, so is there anything other business that may properly become in front of the meeting for the board?
Nope.
Brian, you got anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, aye.
La camera, aye. Okay, thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.